Good afternoon. Welcome everyone to our Monday, July 8th, 2019, 6:00 PM Fairfield County Council Meeting. First we'll have the approval of the agenda. Do I have a motion?
No.
It's been moved improperly second. All those in favor?
Ah.
Any opposed? It's approved 7-0, the approval of the agenda. Now down to our invocation, Councilmember Douglas.
Dear Lord, please bless this council and administration. Help us, help guide us to make the right decisions that the taxpayers and citizens of Fairfield County deserve and expect. In all his name, amen.
Amen. Thank you, Mr. Douglas. No public presentations. Now down to our first public comment session. Ms. Davis, anyone sign to speak? I'm sorry, the approval of minutes. Approval of regular meeting, June 24th, 2019.
I've been moved to change.
It's been moved improperly second. All those in favor?
Ah.
Any opposed? Minutes of June 24th, 2019 are approved. There are no public presentations. Now down to our first public comment session. Ms. Davis, anyone sign to speak?
We have five speakers tonight. First, Ms. Shirley Siebel, speaking on Airport Road.
Mister Chairman, Mister Taylor, members of Fairfield County Council, public, we are here again. I am here representing the Airport Road community, and we are asking again that you not put us and our property and our health in jeopardy by voting for this air burner. We have gone to see the operation, and it was like comparing apples to oranges. And I want a couple of things I would like to bring to your attention. Last week Brett, Mister Calder, said that he was going to put the burner 500 feet away from the center of the road. Well, it's come to our attention that he can't do that because the property line is only 387.2 feet. It's not 500 feet until it goes into someone else's property. Therefore, he can only put it 250 feet from where the location is. And we have a matter of concern. We think that we, as a matter of environmental concerns, we think that we, as an Airport Road community, we should have been included in the DEHAC process. And I'd like to ask you some questions. Are you aware of the DEHAC permit, of what's in the DEHAC permit? And what is the air dispersion model for Airport Road? What is the air dispersion model for Airport Road? If, what if any, is the pollution control device that has been bought and paid for by this model? And I can also ask you, are you, are you financially ready to accept the liability that will come from the citizens of Airport Road and surrounding camp, surrounding area for the health concerns that may come, that will come, from being exposed to this, this type of carcinogens? Mister Calder told you two weeks ago that we are already being exposed to carcinogens from the grinder. Everyone knows that carcinogens is just a fancy name for cancer agents. We have been exposed to carcinogens for the last 15 to 20 years. Are you financially ready, since you own the property, you own the grinder, and you will own the burner? Are you ready for the liability that that will bring? Can you be 100% sure that only the wooden products will be the only thing that will be burned in your incinerator? The pictures that Mister Calder shared with me when he went to Beaufort showed that it was burning profusely, and when I say profusely, I mean profusely. And I said, Mister Calder, what is, why is it burning so? He said, it's overloaded. How are we going to know that the operators will not be overloading again? Was that the bell? Thank you very much for your time. I do appreciate it.
Thank you. Next, Mister John Siebel, speaking on Airport Road.
Good afternoon. Mister Chairman, councilmembers, Mister Taylor, I had an opportunity to go with the group to see the one in Richland County. I was told that there's 150 acres for this entire site. The burner is much larger than the one here, but it sits on, this one sits right in the middle of 52 acres with five miles, five acre bunkers around this site. So it's five miles, five acres to the nearest house. Now, I looked at the thing, the thing was burning, and it had smoke going everywhere. It was smoking from the top, it was smoking from the side, it was smoking from the back, it was smoking everywhere because the thing is open from the, from the very front. And after we left this, we went down to the neighborhood, and we went to the first house we got to, we were standing in the yard, and the lady was probably over 80 years old, and we were talking to her, and she said, well, I don't see no smoke. But then as we were standing there, my wife asked me, what's that falling from the trees? And as I looked around, I said, no, that's not coming from the trees. It was like snowflakes falling from the ash that was coming from the incinerator that had a five acre bunker around it. Now, we sit on Airport Road, we don't have five acres between where my house is, where my neighbor's house is, and we don't have that long. You may have a smaller burner there, but even if it's a smaller burner, it's got less travel time area to get to our residence. And I just want Airport Road to just stand up and just, Airport Road, these, these are our neighbors. These are the people that live in that particular neighborhood. These are the people that is experiencing everything that we are talking about and concerned enough to come to you to, tonight, to say, you know, as our representatives, you know, have some passion for us, have some concern for us, have some concern for our living. We, we have struggled for our houses, and we have done, you know, we got them pretty much paid for. We, you know, we don't want to have to get up and try to move somewhere now simply because of something that's being forced on us. I just asked you tonight if you would just have a little compassion for us, and that statement that was made in the very beginning about we can control the smoke, I assure you that you can't control the smoke. Only thing that blower did when it passed over is suppress the smoke a little bit at that point, but then you can see it still is out of control. It still goes beyond that little, that incinerator. It, it's no way that you can control the smoke. Solids don't burn. Once that wood get heated up, then it changes to a gas. So you're not burning and releasing just fumes, you're releasing gas fume. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, Ms. Jackie Workman, speaking on the Airport Project.
Good evening, Chairman Robertson and councilmembers. Jackie Workman, District Four. On July 6th, which was Saturday, I took it upon myself to visit the community on Airport Road. I was totally appalled to see a dumping ground in this community so close to the residence. Some residents live adjacent to the site. This is an injustice to this community. I have heard councilmembers say they care about the well-being of all citizens. It's not in your community, that's what you're saying to me. Therefore, it appears to be okay until someone dies from the toxins or an employee is injured. Wood chips can reduce the amount of nitrogen available in the soil for plants. They contain toxic chemicals, termites live in dead wood, so wood chips may attract termites to the area. Therefore, I'm asking council to vote against this plan ordinance and to relocate the wood chip in site to a non-residential area. I have heard so many, I, so, so, excuse me, I have heard so many times that council represents, tell me if I'm not attentive, represent the whole county. So how many of you have visited the residence on Airport Road community? And you don't have to talk, you don't even have to respond, but I would like for you to please raise your hands if you have door knocked and visited the community. I'm asking you to be the difference and demonstrate the difference. Demonstrate your love for the citizens on Airport Road. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, Mister John Jones, speaking on first reading ordinance 728.
Hello, John Jones, District Four. When I got my county council agenda paper, I read through it, and I came across the first reading ordinance number 728. All I could do was sigh. I'm gonna read it to you, and if anybody can tell me exactly what it means, besides the lawyer, I'll walk out. Anyhow, an ordinance authorizing the execution and delivery of a fee in lieu of ad valorem taxes agreement by and between Fairfield County, South Carolina, and Project Gold Star to provide for payment of a fee in lieu of taxes, semicolon, authorizing the inclusion of a project site in a multi-county business park, semicolon, authorizing special source revenue credits, semicolon, and other related matters. That's the one thing I understood right away. Now, did anybody get that and understand it totally? Good, we're all normal. The thing is, it's being spoken to us in legalese. You and I don't speak that way. You and I didn't go to school to learn that language and jargon. It shouldn't be put on this for us to have to research on the internet and whatever else we can find to try to decipher what it means. That should not be our responsibility. Our representatives should have their lawyer put this down in legalese, and then underneath it, as to say, the execution and delivery of a fee in lieu, which means instead of collecting taxes, they just want a fee. Alright, so we won't have, we won't get the tax put on us, it's gonna be a fee paid to the people that do the service. Say it. Don't put it down in legal jargon that very few of us can understand, because the first thing it does is the red flag goes off, and it's like, alright, what are they doing? You don't need to live like that. I don't need to feel like that. We can make this better, because this is only the first reading. So every time there's a first reading, if we have an explanation that says in plain language what you guys are trying to do, you get a herd of wild Indians behind you just raring to go, you can achieve anything. But, on the other hand, if they're sitting there looking like this because they don't understand it, that's a hard road to hoe. Explain it to us. Don't talk at us, talk to us. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, Mister Randy Bright, speaking on Secret Promise.
Randy Bright, Ridgeway, District One, Fairfield County. You guys have done a generally good job of improving transparency for our county, and I commend you for that. However, you've taken a slip back with this promise program. There's lots of confusion, lots of secrecy. One, for off the bat, why are you talking about this in executive session? There's no double secret contracts that you're signing, is there? This is between intergovernments. You shouldn't need to talk about this in executive session, it should be open. But the confusion that really surrounds us right now, have we signed a contract or have we not? Midlands Tech is advertising we have. On their website, they have a portal to start applying for this new program. They describe the program as they see it. None of us are aware of it. The, the news media thinks it's been signed, so have we or have we not signed a contract? If we have, shame on you, because none of the public was involved in this discussion. Number two, what, in, in this whole thing, is, are we really, the way that the, the proposal on the Midlands Tech site reads, Fairfield Midlands Tech site reads, is that this is for, I'm paraphrasing, to remove financial obstacles for those who cannot afford to move on their education at a technical school. Then, further down, it says anybody, as long as they meet certain eligibility requirements as far as residency and high school graduation, that thing, anybody can get it. So there's no means testing? Rich kids? We're gonna fund rich kids' college education that can afford it? What sense does that make? That means those in the lower incomes who pay taxes will be paying, subsidizing higher income students' college education who could afford the education on their own. What kind of program is that when you don't means test scholarships? The general concept is pretty good, but it's, it's all just very vague. And, and what are we going to do to ensure that the prospective students for these scholarships are going to meet all the requirements as far as applying for the appropriate scholarships? Now, and that tells you another thing, on applying for scholarships, we pay the difference between what scholarships they get and what they don't get. Well, who would get the most that we pay for? The rich kids who won't get other scholarships because they already have plenty of money. So this inverse thinking is that the wealthier you are, the more we'll subsidize your education at Midlands Tech Fairfield. There's just, and there's a, a lot more questions to go.
Thank you. That concludes segment one.
Thank you. There are no public hearings. Now down to ordinances, resolutions, and orders. Item A is third and final reading ordinance number 723. Ms. Davis.
An ordinance to amend the Fairfield County Land Management Ordinance number 599 to provide for the zoning reclassification from RD Rural Resource District to I-1 Industrial District of 11.32 acres owned by Fairfield County, applicant, tax map number 0870201009000 portion. Property is located at Old Airport Road, Winsbar, South Carolina, 29180.
Do I have a motion?
No.
I have a second. A second by Ms. Goins. For discussion, I would like, I think we have a representative for, to come up, Ms. Taylor, is that possible, so we can?
Yes, Mister Chairman. In anticipation of questions that we may have concerning the permitting with DEHAC, we have asked Mister William Ott, who is with Davidson Floyd. Davidson Floyd is an engineering firm that handled all of our permitting with DEHAC on this. Mister Ott, if you could get up, if you would, and give us an explanation. You have also something.
Do you have a second?
That's, that's.
We'll give it to them.
I'll start out by kinda just going through an overview of the whole permitting process and just kinda give y'all more information about it. When you permit a source that has emissions, or in this case, it has to do with solid waste, it usually requires a permit by DEHAC. This one required a Bureau of Air Quality permit and a solid waste permit. The air permit has been submitted recently, but it's still under review by the Bureau of Air Quality, and the solid waste permit is kinda on standstill right now because of the zoning requirements. Um, yes, sir.
You said it's still under review by BAQ?
Yes, sir.
What does that mean?
Um, it's been submitted, but it's under review by them, so they haven't made a final decision, or they haven't came to the conclusion and actually created the permit yet, if that makes sense.
So it, could it be rejected?
It could. If it meets all ambient air quality standards, then they can't reject it by their laws. And I'm gonna get more into that in, in the next couple slides. And one other question that you had earlier, you said that you weren't involved in the permitting process. There is a public hearing for the air permit, but it hasn't got to that point yet because it's just been submitted recently. So you all will, will know that there's a public hearing coming up, and there'll be an open comment period for that, for the air permit. Give one more, please. So this is a map of the site and the property line with the additional property that they bought. If you see right in the center of that circle is where the burner is, and that circle has a 500-foot diameter, or radius, sorry. So it's 500 feet from any of the residents right there on the edge of the road. And I know one of you had a comment about it was only 280 feet or something like that, but I'm not sure if you had the correct property line with the additional land that they purchased and everything. And you can see the burner is located more towards the back of that, so it's 500 feet from that one house in the center of the driveway. And if you go one more slide, please. So this table here shows criteria pollutants and other pollutants that were modeled for this burner in the property line. You have things like particulate matter, sulfur dioxide, nitrogen dioxide, carbon monoxide. There's ambient air quality standards for each one of these that a source must pass to be able to be permitted. If you look in the, I know it might be hard to see, but the second to last column, that's the standard. And these are actually created by EPA, they're just enforced by South Carolina DEHAC, but the burner passes each of these categories. You know, these same pollutants are emitted out of your car, other sources, industries that have big stacks, and they all have to meet these same standards. These standards are set, so a source must pass them, and that's considered to not be a hazard or a health concern to the community or any surroundings if they pass these standards. If they're, if one of these standards were higher than the, the ambient air standard, then they would immediately turn down the permit, and it wouldn't pass. And this is part of the review process that they're under right now. And I think there might be one more slide. And as you all have probably already seen, since you went and, and took a look at one, the air burner is designed to reduce the emissions. It has the airflow that goes over the top, and it's supposed to encapsulate the smoke to the point where, once it's burned at a high temperature, it doesn't emit as much smoke as, say, just an open pit that burns. The one that you saw in Richland County, you, that's probably correct, that it was overloaded, because if it's overloaded, it create, or it breaks the air seal on the top, that's gonna cause the smoke to release. So I can say as a part of the air permit, there would be terms and conditions in there that say that the operators have to be trained, and there's operating requirements that say you can only load so much at a time, and overloading it would definitely be a violation of the permit. With that being said, DEHAC's not gonna be out there enforcing it, but that would just be something with the county and the workers and everything that would have to be communicated well to know how much to put in. There might be a little test period to know the amount you can put in at, at one time, stuff like that.
I have a question for you.
Yes, sir.
How often would DEHAC come out to check it?
Um, to be honest, they would be out there a pretty good amount in the beginning, because they, they take sources like this very seriously. And I'm sure either the local office or Columbia would come, and, at least routinely, until they felt that, that it was being operated correctly.
And it would be a random check, or they would let Fairfield County know they're coming?
Um, I'm not sure, to be honest with you.
Okay, thank you.
I have something too. Some of the people up there was afraid that the 11.32 acres that we were trying, trying to change the zoning on was all that the county was gonna use to put this incinerator on, but it's not true. The county owns 40.32 acres in that area. Approximately 25 acres of that would be used for the process. If anyone in the audience wants a picture of it, how it's gonna be, here it is right here, and Ms. Davis has them up here if y'all wanna come up and get one.
I have a question. What is the normal lifespan of the incinerator? The reason I ask that question is, is because the one we looked at on, when we went to Richland County, it looked like it had gotten old, okay, the, the equipment, the, the noise was so loud, smoking, as Mister Siebel said, from everywhere. Okay?
Yes, sir.
So what is the lifespan?
I would have to look into it to know that answer, to be honest with you. But I know, once it, if it did get to the point where it got degraded and it was leaking out the sides, stuff like that, then they wouldn't necessarily, or it would probably violate a permit condition. There would be terms in the permit that say if any malfunctions occur, the way it happens is there's, if it is malfunctions, you have to report those within 30 days to DEHAC. So if the emissions get to the point where, like, say, the opacity, which is the thickness of the smoke coming out, if it exceeds a certain percentage, then you have to report that to DEHAC, so they know, and if you have multiple occurrences where you exceed, exceed the opacity, then they'll either shut you down or come out there, and you won't be able to operate, pretty much, so.
Okay, and, and another question is, is that, one of the things you said is that if you overload, you violate the permit. However, in Beaufort, they violated the permit because they overloaded it.
Yes, sir, most likely. It was probably just an operator that didn't know, to be honest with you.
And what, what the audience needs to know, the citizens of Fairfield County needs to know, what we're voting on tonight, this ordinance, is not to open up or use the incinerator. All we're doing is trying to change the zoning so this 11.3 acre, 32 acres could be added to the property that we already have.
Yes, sir, that's correct. You're changing the...
I have a question to Mister Taylor. Have we looked at a Plan B as far as this is concerned? I know we've spent a lot of money trying to get it to this point, but is there a Plan B? You know, my concern is, is, is for the residents of the, of that community, but as Miss Siebel said in the last meeting, there are a lot of people with chronic illness out there, and, you know, I really don't wanna be a part of something that's gonna add on to their illness or cause other illnesses. Have we looked at a Plan B?
Your concerns are valid, of course. We should have a Plan B. We do not at this point, because to get to this point that we have got to now is very expensive. When we hire engineers and when we start looking at properties, it's expensive to do that. So no, we have not expended any funds at this point on a Plan B.
And, and the next part of that question, just to follow up from Mister Gilbert, is, one of the things is, is, is it true that the county has dispersed carcinogens into the community at the site, at that site?
Again, I'm not qualified to answer that question. I mean, I don't, I'm not a scientist or, or, again...
Okay, but, um, Miss Siebel says one of the things that Mister Calder told her is that there's been carcinogens released into the area. I don't know whether it came from the wood grinder, that's where it had to come from.
Obviously, I think particulates do get dispersed in the air when we grind wood, and that's why we were looking at this. We felt this was a better alternative to what we were doing currently.
That is correct. There's a amount of... There's an amount of particulate matter that gets exposed to the air when you grind.
Is this a safer alternative for us?
Um, I don't know.
Well, we're voting on tonight, doesn't have anything to do with opening up the incinerator.
I understand that, but if citizens have concerns, we at least wanna try to address them.
Mr. Taylor, I have, I have a question. If we rezoned 11.32 acres to make it a total of 40 acres, I think he stated that the incinerator would be 500 feet from the nearest house. If we own 40 acres, is it a way that we can put it farther back than 500 feet since we own the 40 acres?
There are certain, well, I will let the engineer address this, but I think it's wetlands issues. The site is driven, where we put it is dictated by DEHEC regulations, but I'll let you address that.
Yes, sir. Is there any way you can go back to the, the site map on there? So the location of the burner right now, it can't be moved any farther back with this property line? Because in that, the main area of the highest concentrations of pollutants that I showed you on the slide earlier, actually on the backside of that property line. In the model that we run, it's a very tedious model that you, you input a lot of information in. It has terrain data, weather data, a lot of stuff that inputs into there, 3D models and everything in it. If you look around the property line on that, on the picture right here, it has points every 50 meters, and it measures the concentrations of those pollutants at each point. And if it doesn't pass at each point, then it'll, it fails the model, and it definitely wouldn't get approved by DEHEC. This site, y'all are right that it is kind of, it's not the biggest site, and it's kinda skinny. So the point where the burner is right now is really the only location that it will work because the solid waste permit, it requires the burner to be, I think it was 100 feet from a wetland, and there's a wetland to the right of where the burner is right now, so it can't go to the right anymore. And with the air modeling, it can't really move anymore towards the property line on the backside, because most likely it would, it would fail those limits if it moved closer to it. So that's about the only spot. I mean, it might be able to move around a little bit, but it, we can't go like another 100 feet or anything like that.
I have one last question for you. Oh, I'm sorry.
When we began this process, there were other properties that were looked at at that time? This was...
We began, right before I got here, I don't, since I have been here, we've looked at no other properties. Now, I don't know what happened before, because it's been going on for about three years.
Okay. I want to say also, and going to the site, and I'm not downplaying this at all, you know, at going to the site, the problem that I did see, the chipper that we now use, that was a health, straight-up health hazard to me, and especially where they're grinding at. It was right adjacent to the road, so my question was, can they move it to the back pile, back part of that pile where they're actually pulling the debris from, and make it a little more safer where the wind direction, I guess, will go different, because now it does go across the road on houses. And saying that, going to Richland County, I saw what they have, and I have some pictures on my phone. And the unit that they have, I'm not familiar with any of this until now, the unit that they have is a huge, we can put ours inside theirs. It's also an older unit, and that's obvious right away, that's, that is obvious. The unit that we have, it's more, I would say environmentally structured. Also, the inside of it is different, so you wouldn't be able to put a whole lot in it to burn in the first place, would not be able to put. The design is so, the, the sound is all different, everything is different about it. As far as the smoke, I saw the picture from one in Beaufort, and the amount of smoke that comes out of it. I still did not have the concern that I have, that we now presently have with the chipper, because I could actually see all the particles, everything that's coming out of that. That needs to be changed. And this is the only choice we have, it's safer for now in time, there would be something else. Also, from my understanding, Mr. Calder says, once we get this burner in place, all of that debris that was once mentioned there, all that stuff that's out there in front, all of that will be cleaned up, cleared up, done away with. So actually, we have a parcel there that will, whereas now is disgusting, will be cleaned up, won't be even in view of the community or anything. We can eliminate all of that by doing this process.
Yes, ma'am, that's correct.
Okay, okay. And I can understand what you're saying, the, the chart that we look at back there, that information would be the manufacturer as to what it does, a lot of information would have to come from the manufacturer. But like I said, I'm not downplaying this. I understand this because we live not far from V.C. Somers nuclear plant, so there was a lot of conversation about that. I can understand all of that. But I also understand the fact that on a daily basis, there are things in life that we're gonna have to depend on DEHEC and regulations in order to make our life a little bit better.
Yes, ma'am.
And this is one of those cases, it's a difficult situation, it's, it's tough decisions to make, but this is one of those situations that we will not know and affect until it's put into action.
Yes, ma'am, that's correct.
And we won't, we won't know then how much smoke is gonna come, whatever's gonna happen. We can sit all day and, you know, go back and forth, we won't know. But when that does happen, and it happens, that's why we have DEHEC, that's why we have regulators to shut it down, to stop it.
Yes, ma'am.
Before there's any danger, before there's any harm.
That's right. And I will say that the air permit that they would get for this burner, it would be a Title V permit, which is one of the most stringent and, like, strict permits that you can get because of the source. It's because of the potential. The way that you do the permits is, the air curtain that has the airflow that goes over it is actually the control device. So without that control device, the emissions would be greater. But that, the permit that they would get would have a lot of restrictions, and the public comment period that you would be able to go to, they could even, if you had any other concerns, if they didn't have those items already in the permit, then any other concerns, they could add that to it, if that makes sense. Like the proper operation and things like that.
There's a thing that we could do to solve the problem. This additional property behind this that we can purchase. And just like this right here, we could buy a property back here and move it, because the wetland is right in here.
Yes, sir.
We could move, we could buy a property back over here and put it back further to the back. And that way, you wouldn't have to worry, there's no houses across the road from it if you put the incinerator down here.
Yes, sir.
You'd have to buy additional property, but that's the best way to make it safer for the neighborhood.
Yes, sir. If it was that far away, I can't speak for certain, but you probably wouldn't even be able to...
Well, I'll show it to you.
See the smoke. Or I was just gonna say, the smoke probably wouldn't even really reach the houses by that point.
Okay, then, so there are many, there are many discussions here.
Enough right back in there to put the incinerator back over here. That way, it wouldn't be anywhere close to this, this open space here.
Yes, sir.
There are many discussions here. We even now trying to come up with a plan to better do this. You know what? We don't have, we don't have enough answers, there are too many questions unanswered, so we need to, we do not need to take this any further, in my opinion. That's, again, that's my opinion.
I think we need to go ahead and vote on, on the land.
All we're doing is changing the rezoning.
All we're doing is rezoning the land as of right now.
Buy additional property and move it.
But let me tell you, one of the things that happened is, if we go ahead and rezone it, there's no restriction left to the citizens of this county. So I am not in favor of rezoning at this point.
Ms. Taylor, you got anything?
Again, the issue is rezoning tonight, and we can, we can rezone if you all wish to do that, and we can hold and bring back, before we put it in operation, contingent upon other plans that you all might want us to develop, such as purchasing additional property or looking at Plan Bs.
Move it way over here.
Voting tonight is not prohibiting us from doing that, is what I'm trying to say.
Exactly. We can always look at other alternatives, but I, I am concerned, citizens concerned as well, but I think there is no problem with rezoning it for right now. We can always purchase more land and move it back, so.
And do whatever, whatever's needful at that time, just doing, this is just a start, but we'll be doing nothing with the incinerator until everything is cleared.
We'll have to vote on the incinerator, we can vote to change, but voting on...
Is, is there any more discussion before we take a vote?
I did just wanna say one more thing. With the air permit, they would have the opportunity for the public hearing. I think it's open for 60 days. So even if you did vote to rezone the land, they would still have that chance, and that would actually be with DEHEC. So, you know, if they, if they went to that and it didn't get approved, then they still have a say in it. So the rezoning is just for the solid waste permit, it doesn't have anything to do with the air, the air permit.
Counsel got any further questions, concerns, comments? If not, I'll take a vote. All those in favor, by saying aye. Let's raise hands, 'cause I, all those in favor? Two, three, five in favor? Oppose?
Nay.
Two opposed. Approve five, two. Thank you, Ms. Dot.
Thank you.
All right. Now down to item B, first reading by title only, ordinance number 728. Ms. Davis.
An ordinance authorizing the execution and delivery of a fee in lieu of ad valorem taxes agreement by and between Fairfield County, South Carolina, and Project Gold Star to provide for payment of a fee in lieu of taxes, authorizing the inclusion of a project site in a multi-county business park, authorizing special source revenue credits and other related matters.
I so moved, Ms. Chair.
Second.
It's been moved improperly, second. There is no discussion. All those in favor? Any opposed? It's approved seven zero, first reading, ordinance number 728. There are no board and commission minutes, no board and commission appointments, no old business, no new business. Now down to our county administrator's report. Ms. Taylor.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Two items tonight. The first is a request for auditing services. We have had, periodically, we do have to bid this out, it has come up to the point where we need to bid it out again. We did bid it out, took it to Administration and Finance Committee. During the bid process, we had three companies submit their qualifications on this, you don't do a strict bid, you put out for qualifications. We had Faulkner and Thompson, Malden and Jenkins, and Elliott Davis. It is good periodically to change, I think best practices are, every three to five years you should change your auditing firms to make sure that, you know, you're having your books looked at by a wider variety of eyes, and kind of the checks and balances concept. Unfortunately, we only did have the three. Ms. Sheila Pickett, if you could come to the, Ms. Pickett here? No, oh, there she is. The way we do the selection process on this is, we do put together a selection committee, and they review all of the qualification packets that were submitted. Out of the packets that were submitted, the committee did choose Elliott Davis again to recommend to the finance committee. They took it to the finance committee, and the finance committee has recommended to full counsel to go with Elliott Davis. Ms. Pickett, if you could go through just briefly your selection committee's process and how they came to choose Elliott Davis.
The committee had three firms to review. Each committee member reviewed each proposal. They were giving evaluation forms to evaluate each proposal. Once their decision was made after evaluation, a reference check was done, questions was asked for each firm that the committee had. Once the responses came back, it was forward to the committee, they made the final decision and determined that Elliott Davis was their choice.
Any questions from counsel?
And that committee is made up of county employees.
Elected official, county employee staff.
And what was the main objection to the other two? I think the main objection, what I read, was the fact that they gave too much information in their...
In meaning, I'm sorry, in meaning in that they discussed, some of the committee, they wrote down that they gave too much information, which was out of order, not requested of the RFP, that they put our information at the end of the RFP. They gave too much information, not what was all there was required. They gave more than what was required.
Well, what's wrong with that?
Let me stop for a minute. I didn't get a motion to discuss, to bring it to the table first.
I so moved, Ms. Chair.
It's been moved improperly, second. Now we can go into discussion. Go ahead.
In meaning, also, in meaning in too much information, they gave information that wasn't required. They talked about schools, cities, counts, other things that was not pertaining to the solicitation that we put out. That means they gave, you know, they gave everything, but we was really looking for what they did for county government.
You, if you're trying to hire somebody, and the guy comes up and says, "Oh, my name's Jim Ray Douglas," and just sits down and says nothing else. And then if he tries to explain what he's done in his life and how good a work he did, it's too much information, can't hire you. You can't hire you, you just gave too much information.
I understand your point, but I'm only going by the recommendation of the county committee that was set upon them, and that's the decision they made. U.S. counsel has the decision to determine not to use them.
I'm on the counsel, I just wanna make sure that that committee doesn't meet again in private.
Well, Ms. Douglas, let's, if we're gonna fault the process, let's fault the process, let's not fault the individuals for going through the process.
Okay, well, I voted nay.
We hadn't, we hadn't reached that point yet, so. Any other questions for Ms. Pickett?
The committee met on several occasions. I was a part of that meeting, I sent in as a reporter, I make sure I give them the instructions, what needs, the process of solicitation, of choosing a firm. And they must stick to the guidelines of what was submitted in the solicitation, and that's what they graded them on.
And that was the same thing if you were looking forward. They need to be specific, stick to the guidelines that you require.
That is correct, that is what the committee decided on.
Ms. Pickett, I just wanna make sure I thank you for the, for the work you've done and, and for the committee, 'cause I think those, some of those committee members doesn't work for you all, right?
That is correct, we have an elected official that sits on that committee.
Yes, so again, thank you for all the work you've done, appreciate it very much.
Again, I'd just like to piggyback, thank you all for what you do, that's, it's a hard task, and, and, you know, I can't fault the pool that you had to pick from, so.
Well, the committee is set up by the county administrator, I don't choose the committee.
We got them for another year, so it'll be 10 years they've been doing auditing Fairfield County.
And that is the discretion of the county council.
Is it a two-year contract or one year?
It's determined for two, two years.
Yes, what I figured, it'd be 11 years we've had the same auditor. No fresh eyes to look at the finances and stuff in Fairfield County. It seemed like to me the county workforce wants to have the same one every year, so they can tell them where to go.
Any further comments or questions for Ms. Pickett?
Yes, sir, Chairman. I read the results, and I'm satisfied with what the, the committee did, and based off of your results of whether or not those other two were qualified, I'm pleased with it.
All right. If there's no further discussion, thank you, Ms. Pickett. You, you have a question?
We need a motion.
Yeah, okay. If there's no further questions, I'll make, entertain a motion.
No, we already took the motion, just for...
I'm sorry. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
Approved four to two.
The only other item I have tonight, I did wanna let counsel know, we did have a signing ceremony of the Promise Program, indicating that we have, again, budgeted money for this program. We have signed a non-binding MOU, I think a question was asked earlier tonight, we signed a non-binding MOU. We do have a contract or details to work out on how that money will be dispersed, and we will follow up and do that.
Okay. Thank you. Now down to...
Okay, and why, during that process, the team will be involved in that, as well as letting the public know where we are and what's going on.
We'll have a recommendation on an agreement drawn up by our attorney, which we will bring to you all, and then that will go and be public also. we will bring to you all, and then that will go, uh, and be public also.
All right, thank you.
Well, when I talked to the, uh, somebody from Midland Tech called me and talked to me about it, and they said there's no guarantee that they have any classes. And they were looking to have that money every year, is what he told me on the phone. I don't know how true it is, but that's what he told me when I talked to him.
Well, uh, as I stated in the budget, uh, Mr. Douglas, having classes at our campus would definitely be a plus for us. Hopefully, hopefully, that's something we can work on, but as far as the, the promise initiative, you know, you, you don't wanna take a promise, uh, give it to them and take it away, so that's, that's, that's something we need to think about in the future.
Yeah, but Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Um, I had a conversation with one of the administrators from Midland Tech also, and I was informed that they are trying to get classes up here. What they need, what they're asking us to do is to promote, um, students to come out and, and wanna take classes here.
Yes, sir.
Said that they've already, have, only had two people to wanna have classes up here, so they're looking for us to come up with a way to get them promote, uh, get this promoted. Uh, we, they are willing to come up and talk to the public about getting classes up here, but there's something that they.
I spoke with them also today, and, um, I'm gonna put them on the next, uh, council's, uh, agenda so they can speak.
Yeah, but it is a hot item for them.
Ms. Chair, this is a huge deal, you all, especially to the citizens. Um, a lot of things we're doing in the, in the county today is, is, um, is extremely good. You know, we, we announced an industry, um, we got the mega site over there. All that work is, is really good work. And this is a huge deal, to be able to allow our students to be able to go to school tuition-free. One of the things I did is, um, I pulled the information off the, um, Kershaw County, um, website, because they, they have this program too. And, and it's almost the same scholarship criteria as we have today. Now, one of the things that, if you've been watching the news, some of the things you see is these presidential candidates, they're going around campaigning against that, that we have community colleges free, um, tuition-free. And we are doing this in Fairfield County. Man, come on. This is big. This is a, this is a good thing. You know what? This is something that we all be jumping up shouting about, that we have the opportunity to do this for our, for the citizens of, of our county, for the people that graduate from school. And, and they, they even use, um, in, in Kershaw County, they even go back a year. Um, if you hadn't, if you didn't sign up the first year you graduated, they'll allow you to go back to the previous year. So again, and I have that information right here. But again, um, I wanna, um, thank all members of council for, um, voted, for voting this in, um, for voting the, the money in the budget. Good deal. And also the, um, the school district.
I'm not against, um, you know, educating children. I'm all for it. I've been trying to get Midland Tech for the last five years, to try to teach classes there at their building. They say campus of Midland Tech, oh, yet they've had no classes whatsoever. And it's a shame that we have to pay them seventy-five thousand dollars to get them to start a class. Well, I had, I had my granddaughter going to school in Columbia. She had to go all the way to the airport campus. You had the same thing. If we had the classes here in Winnsboro, she wouldn't have to worry about gas money and stuff like that. I, I do agree, it's, it's really good if we do have the classes.
I agree. Yes, sir. All right. Now, uh, there is no clerk to council's report. Now down to our second public comment session. Ms. Davis.
We have two speakers. First, Ms. Jackie Workman, speaking on visions.
Good evening again, Chairman Robertson and councilmembers. Jackie Workman, District Four. I have heard the term transparency so many times from citizens, able to view or see. I receive some of the information requested under the Freedom of Information Act concerning the farmer's market. Due to the size of the print, I was unable to read it thoroughly. And I have these glasses that enlarge. The total money spent thus far for the farmer's market is eighty-two thousand, eight hundred and fifty-six dollars and twenty-one cent, which does not include the thirty thousand dollars received from the Chamber of Commerce. Who authorized the spending of the money since it clearly exceeds twenty-five thousand dollars? Where are the minutes to that authorization that I requested? Was this money included in the budget or considered as a special project? If the farmer's market project is not completed, what is the timeline for completion? And what is a projected financial budget for completion? Who decides what is considered to be a special project? How much money is in the budget or allotted to special projects? Will the council please respond to these questions in writing, so that transparency will not be an issue? It is my understanding that the county has discretionary credit card. How many agencies has access to such a credit card authority? And how much each is allowed to spend, including the county administrator? For transparent purposes and accountability, I would like a response in writing. Please accept this as a formal request under the Freedom of Information Act. Secondly, let me hurry up. Mr. Taylor, Emirra's going suggested that we give the eight point twelve acres of land for two acres that the county owns that sits on waterfront Metal Lake Road. This offer is totally and completely unacceptable to the community. I am diametrically opposed to Emirra's going suggestion that more people would come to the two acres because it has waterfront than the eight point twelve acres of land. What are you all thinking about? The community, the community have fought too hard. One minute. Over the years, to be denied access to our tax dollars for whatever reasons unknown to the citizens. After speaking with citizens of the community, they want to see the county working on the last row recreation site. We await your prompt response, and thank you.
Thank you. Next, Mr. Randy Bright, speaking on haste makes waste.
Randy Bright, District One, Fairfield Ridgeway. Tonight, there's been a couple of good examples of sometimes our enthusiasm to move forward with things. So, uh, we, um, put the cart before the horse. Certainly, one example is with this air curtain. Um, and the air curtain example has been repeated, uh, is a repetition of what we've done with environmental projects in the past. And that's, we start to move forward, and then we backtrack and, and do our due diligence at that time. Couple of examples of those. Number one was the first time that we put the, uh, the chipper in. We didn't live up to the promises that we promised the people that it wouldn't, that it would be noise-free. Number two, I go back to the, the Spanish firm that we were gonna allow to set up a chipping plant. We didn't do our due diligence or, or homework on environmental concerns with that. And then now, uh, we're just now backtracking and, and doing our due diligence in, in exploring the environmental concerns. We haven't even got the permits yet. Now, my, um, my thoughts here is also to remind you that when it comes to environment, even though you get a permit, you've gotta be doubly sure that that's correct. How many EPA things have been approved in the past and turned out to be not so good? The other part of it is, when it comes to environmental concerns, this, we're rich with land in the middle of nowhere that's not around people. We, we have a wealth of that, and that's, we should leverage that to advantage. The next time that we have a environmental project that impacts our environment, our air quality, water quality, and our land table and our water tables, let's not rush to a site. Let's pick a site that it won't bother anybody, even if it, whether it's, uh, after the permitting process. Permitting does not guarantee success. Remember, with this air quality, if you do the research, this, this machine, and someone can correct me if I'm wrong, there's still, at, at best, if human operation is perfect, at best, it's ten percent. So we still get ten percent particle emission, at best, operating under human particles. So we, let's do our due diligence before we move forward and start to move forward with these type of projects. Same way with, with the, uh, Midlands Promise Pro, uh, Program. Only one-third of students nationwide complete a two-year program within three years. How are we factoring in those costs? Have we looked at that? And there's so many more questions as far as that. We, I agree, the project, that project, actually both projects are meritous on the surface, but without doing our homework before we jump into it, they could become disastrous. Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes segment two.
All right. Now down to our county council time. Any council member like to be recognized? Vice Chair Goan.
Thank you, thank you so much. Um, just want to thank the team for the effort they're putting in to listen to the citizens on Airport Road, and like I said, I don't take that lightly by any means. And I'm sure that we will come to a good resolution that, um, that can be beneficial to us now as well as in the future. On the eight point acres, eight point one acres and, um, Labs Road, as my understanding, the county does not own that property. Is that correct? We do not own.
That is correct.
We do not own that property. It is now no longer SCANA. It is property of Dominion. The, um, previous deed or contract, whatever, has expired. We would have to go through something else to do that, then we'd go through zoning and permitting and everything. What they will allow to go in that particular area will not be up to us per se. There is a parcel in that area that can be accessed and fixed up to a degree for a, for fishing access, maybe for just a small access to water or that space. I'm not trying to make a deal. I didn't try to do that, and I would appreciate if anybody's going to repeat me, please repeat exactly what I said. Said that was another option. I'm not pushing away that because I knew from the beginning, we did not own that property, so we couldn't do anything with it. But there is a piece of property that I understand that county can fix up and make a nice area for the community until we can do something else. I'm hoping that Dominion will work with the county, as SCANA has previously worked with the county, and we can come up with something extremely good for the area. We have a lake with access, with, um, all kind of amenities, but we need to think bigger than that. We think on recreation, so we need to think into another level, go a little bit higher, go a little bit further. What else can we do that's really great, that will enhance the community, that will improve the community, and, uh, the public can get good use out of it. So I just wanted to share that with you. We do not have a control over that eight point acres, eight point one acres. Took nineteen years to get there. It wasn't done then, so we're gonna have to start all over and do whatever we can do, but we're gonna have to do it together.
Thank you, Ms. Goans. Mr. Douglas.
Uh, to the gentleman that, um, was confused about the ordinance number seven two eight, um, when we do a first reading, we do a first reading, we vote on it to have it. And the second reading, it will be explained is exactly what, uh, this ordinance says, so you'll understand better. Thank you.
Any other council member like to be recognized? I'll just, uh, reiterate, uh, we did have the, uh, signing of the, uh, Promise Program Initiative today, and luckily, my, I was one of the ones up there signing, you know, I, I just think, uh, investing in our future for the kids is, is definitely something that's needed in this county, you know, so we can have a stronger workforce, uh, better quality of life, and, you know, we, we'll be somewhat bridging that gap of, of, for that workforce. So, uh, I'm excited about it. I'm excited we can put the details together and, and go from there. Um, any other council member like to be recognized? If not, uh, now down to our executive session. Uh, item A is a contractual matter discussion, a receipt of legal advice regarding an agreement between Fairfield County and Fairfield County School District and Midland Technical College. As to the Promise Program, B is a contractual matter discussion regarding a proposed fee in lieu of tax agreement and associate documents regarding an economic development project identified as Project Gold Star. Do I, do I have a motion?
I so moved, Ms. Chair.
It's been moved improperly second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Uh, we in executive session at seven oh six.